All right, welcome to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, December 21st, 2021. Before we get started, would you all please rise and let's salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's get right into it. So our first scheduled item is change of management application for Main Street Liquors, 391 Main Street. So at this time, okay, please come front and center. Is it Mr. Patel?
Yeah, my name is Patik Patel.
Okay. Okay, why don't you, this is not a public hearing, so just what's your order of business? Just talk to the board, we might have some questions and we'll just go from there.
Okay, so, so I've owned, I'm sort of been a partner with Main Street Liquors for about 16 years. My partner just wants to step down as a liquor license manager and I'm sort of taking over. It's that simple.
Pretty straightforward.
Okay, short and sweet, I love it. See, we're gonna get out of here quick tonight. So let's bring it to the board. So typically, just for the residents, we see the package, there's a lot to go, not only for the application, but background checks and what have you, when I know all the paperwork checked out. And just for the record, Mr. Patel did just pass in a certificate of completion of TIPS certified, TIPS certified, November 11th, 2021. So Mr. Montori, what I'll do is, I'll pass you just for the record. So this was missing, it's usually a big question of the board. So I'm gonna pause, questions from the board? How about Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No questions? I actually believe the E-TIPS was in the packet, because I didn't have that down as a question when I went through this earlier, so I had to sanity check myself real quick. But no, no questions. You've been, as you said, in this for at least 16 years now, so normally it's questions about experience and things of that nature, but I have, I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. How about Ms. Tronick?
I have no questions either. I just would like to say that I really appreciated that the cover letter, that kind of went through it and made it easier to kind of look at everything, so I appreciate that. And I am assuming that you're A-B-C-C, have you heard back from them yet?
I'm assuming this all will be submitted once it's approved by the town.
Okay.
So I think it's the town that sends to be A-B-C-C.
You're correct. You're correct, I'm sorry. Okay, I have no other questions, thank you so much.
How about Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, just one question, sir, and thank you for giving us a little bit of detail that you've been a co-owner for that length of time. Have you ever had the responsibility as a manager, responsible for the liquor sale? In other words, were you on site or were you not like an active employee?
No, no, so I'm quite active. I used to work full-time, this was almost 15 years ago, and then I basically left the technical industry. So I always, actually I'm a liquor license manager in Methuen as well for one of those storms.
Oh, you are?
So I go through, you know, I rotate, do my rounds.
That's, that's what I was driving, I just wanna, you know, it's one thing to own a business, it's another thing to be responsible for serving liquor, right?
It's not an easy job.
Yeah, distributing liquor.
Big responsibility.
Yeah, so thank you, I appreciate that.
Very good, no questions. How about Ms. Wellman?
I have no questions, thank you, your application's complete.
Okay, very good. And Mr. Patel, I always just say a friendly reminder, you know, like the Spider-Man with great responsibility, you know, comes great power, great responsibility, so it's always just a friendly reminder of always being careful in, you know, serving minors in the town. A few years back, we had a little bit of systemic issue, so just always be wary of that, you know, when the minor comes in, to check the IDs and do all the right things. So again, just a friendly reminder, but, so I have no, does that sound?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good, very good, very good. All right, with that being said, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the change of manager application for AHPP LLC Doing Businesses Main Street Liquors.
I have a motion, I have a motion, a second, all who's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, thank you very much, Mr. Patel, thank you.
Thank you, board.
Very good. All right, next order of business is the DPW Snow and Ice Presentation. Mr. Gilbert? Do we have a PowerPoint tonight?
No, we don't, sir. We have short copy here. I'll get right to it. My name is Brian Gilbert, I'm the Director of the Public Works here in Tewksbury. I wanted to come in this evening because you may have heard that the town and towns around us having difficulty bringing in and signing up contractors for snow and ice. I just wanted to get in front of that and give you a status of where we stand on that issue. So a little bit of a background, Tewksbury maintains approximately 160 miles of streets, 16 acres of parking lot, and the DPW being the primary road contractor if you want, we get help from the park department and the school department in doing municipal lots, and that would be school and town lots. In addition, we removed snow from approximately 19 miles of sidewalk, which is about 54% of the 35 miles that we have in town. Sidewalk routes located in the proximity of schools and commercial areas, and I'm gonna jump to the questions, and that is, I'm sure someone's gonna ask me, are we gonna plow Shawshin Street this year? And the answer's no. We haven't accepted it, it's still a construction site, the contractor owns it, the contract end date is July 19th, so starting next year, we will be plowing Shawshin Street. The goal of the DPW is to provide safe passage, that's access to and from your homes, businesses, and public buildings. During winter months, forecast and road conditions closely monitored. Due to the variability of storms, no two storms are alike. It's ever-changing conditions, and it can be even within a storm itself. And those changing conditions are going to, they're gonna dictate what we do in terms of our strategy and how we fight the storm. Some of those would be timing of the storm, the duration, rate of snowfall, snow texture, pre and post a storm conditions, and one we've been using in the last few years more is the road temperature conditions as well. In general, there are three stages of a winter operation, anti-icing, plowing, and de-icing, I'm not gonna get into that. I think what I'd like to do is to jump to the fact that we have a staff of 24 in-house staff, and a complement of contracted pieces of equipment. To date, we have 41 contracted pieces signed up for the coming year, in the past, we've had as many as 62. Last year, we had approximately 48, so this trend went down in the last couple of years. The current number puts us about seven routes short of a minimal operation. With fewer contracted vehicles, the time necessary to remove snow in clear roads will increase. In anticipation of the longer runtimes, the DPW has modified route assignments. The larger vehicles this year will be assigned major arterials. We typically break down the town into five sectors, and they were almost bordered, you know, you work within that sector, but this year, we're actually taking our larger vehicles with the wings and we're putting them on the mains, and they're gonna be inter-sector. So they're gonna be going from one sector to the next, they're just doing, they're pointing and they're running. They gotta, to the end, they turn around, they come back the other way, and it's just a much more effective way to use that piece of equipment. The contractors tend to have the smaller vehicles, so we'll be putting them into more of the neighborhoods. We do assist the, if you will, that neighborhood division by having in-sector plow routes that do the mains inside the sector, but they tend to be secondaries versus the primary roads. I am hopeful, and I do anticipate more signups before the first storm or after the first of the year. I ask the residents of town to be patient, and we understand that this is a very visible and very critical role that we play in the community. We want to serve the community, we want to serve you in ways to keep you safe with the least convenience as possible. So why the reduction in contracted vehicles, I think is something that, you know, I don't think there's any one answer to that, I think it's a culmination of a number of things. One is insurance costs. Insurance costs for liability have been going up. We do require that any contractor who works for us adds the town as additionally insured. In order to get that, you have to have a commercial insurance policy, and there's folks in the past who haven't, who don't carry that, and they put it on at the beginning of the year, in this case. That's why I'm hopeful, because I think some people are gonna walk in the door in January and say, well, I've put it on, I'll come work for you. If they put it on at the end of the year, it costs them more over those four, five months than if they wait till January and put that insurance on. So I'm hopeful we'll get more. What we've done in the past to try to incentivize contractors to sign up early is to add $5 to the rate. So if you sign up by this date, you get five more dollars on this, on an hourly rate for this piece of equipment, and it seemed to work pretty well this year compared to last year, we have more people signed up early. So I do think we'll, we'll sign on some more. There's contractors trying to recoup their costs. With the mild winters that we've been having, why get into it? You know, we pull from the contract, the landscape and contract community, and they've had some robust years in the past couple of years, so it's like, why am I gonna get into something where I don't get the rate of return on the equipment, my staff, so on, so forth? So I think that's been also holding them back. We've lost a couple to parking lots this year as well. Although they're more lucrative, they have a higher risk because of the liability for slips and falls, but they're more lucrative in the way that they pay versus the towns. And the towns, there's been a bidding war going on if you haven't heard, but every, everyone puts out a rate and someone jumps on top of that, and then someone jumps on top of that. So there's not, there hasn't been a lot of activity or a lot of contractors to choose from or to entice, and, and some of them have been pulled away to other towns. So challenges is to adding additional equipment, which I think we're gonna be able to do, getting everyone to come in on all plowable events, that's gonna be hard to do, but certainly we're gonna try, try there. Then the last challenge that I should just throw out here is meeting our chlorine reduction plan that we had to submit to the EPA as part of our stormwater permit. There are certain areas in town adjacent to this Strongwater Brook in the Shawshin that have high chlorine levels, and so we have to reduce, find a way to make those roads safe adjacent to those water bodies, but at the same time, we have to reduce the chlorine. So that's gonna be a challenge for us in the coming years. And I guess I open it up for questions.
Very good. How about Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any sort of estimate on what the impact will be for timing? So I think we're down, what was it, you said about 15% roughly?
Yeah, we're down about seven routes out of a total of 61.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah. The impact, well, it's gonna be the storm, and once storm, we might be able to just, you know, meet our goals. Our goals, basically, once the storm stops, when the snow stops, five, we want five hours, four and a half to five hours to clean everything up and be done. That's our goal. That will, in certain storms, will probably be a little longer, but I can't, I can't tell you, just with all the variability, it's very tough.
Absolutely. And last one is Shawshin, so you had mentioned Shawshin.
Yeah.
I assume you guys will still be monitoring that, the DPW will still be monitoring the the status of Shawshin. Is the contractor going to own that? Is there verbiage in the South for kind of when and how they will handle that, or is it more of kind of at their leisure?
You're referring to them clearing the sidewalk?
Yes.
There's nothing in their contract that requires them to clear that sidewalk.
Okay, so those will, those will be not touched, pretty much?
Those will, that will not be touched.
Perfect, okay.
Yeah.
That's all I've got, thank you.
Very good. How about Ms. Tronick?
Sure, thank you. I just wanna piggyback on the comment that Mr. Mackey made, just to remind residents that when we have snow events, it's really important that they do their sidewalks, because we have been increasing our sidewalks every single year, and it's, you know, always best if everybody shares, and if, I know that, I see a lot of times, people sharing each other with their neighbors, so just kind of wanna remind people of that as well, that it is their responsibility to clear their sidewalks in front of their homes, especially on those main roads where kids are walking to school, so.
Right.
And businesses, and I don't know if we send out reminders to businesses, but we might wanna think about something like that, and just a thought that came into my head as Mr. Mackey was talking. First of all, I truly appreciate that you're coming here and giving us this information before the weather gets rough.
Right.
And I think it's really important that our residents understand that while it doesn't sound like seven routes are a lot to cover, when you have a major snow event, that's a big deal.
Yeah.
And I understand that there are three stages to it, and I really appreciate the road temperatures, because that goes to the pre-treating.
Right.
Which, you know, goes a long way, but I just want people to understand that the staffing challenges that we're meeting here are staffing challenges across every single sector in the town. So I just wanted to say thank you for telling us this, and it would be really helpful if the town manager, if these routes do get filled, if we could just alert the public every meeting just to say, hey, we're still at seven, because you're also gonna lose some. I mean, you know, we're talking about, oh, maybe gaining some, but as you have just said, sometimes the grass is green or somewhere else, and this is people's livelihood.
Yeah.
And if their livelihood can be enhanced somewhere else, there is the possibility that you could also lose routes. So it would just be important for us to kind of keep our finger on that, and those are all the things. Thank you so much for your work, and obviously, your team, in my opinion, has done a spectacular job trying to keep up with.
Thank you.
What is a difficult challenge.
Thank you very much.
How about Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions, Mr. Gilbert. Of the 41 outside contractors that you brought in, do you have any sense, can you offer a comment on how many of them have plowed in Tewksbury before?
I would, I would say a number of them. There are some that are new, they tend to be the smaller contractors, but there've been contractors that have been very loyal to the town over the years, and my hat's off to them.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, there are places they could go, but they signed up with us, and, you know, they're local contractors, so they're loyal to the town.
Yeah, and I guess it, you know, I don't have an answer to this question, but it leads to, I know you mentioned things like increasing the rate if you sign up early and things of that nature, but if someone has been with us for a long time and you like the work they do, maybe that's another wrinkle to add into that type of formula.
Okay.
Just as a thought, because we wanna make sure we have good, solid people. A question that I've experienced, because I have kind of an odd street.
You do.
That has some uniqueness to it.
Yes.
And my question is, do you, as a program, do you kind of catalog those unique sections in town or streets that require maybe a little bit different handling and care, so that when you have a turnover of, you know, those side street, residential street contractors, they can get up to speed a little quicker?
Yes, the five sectors that we have, each have a supervisor, and they're sort of the, they know their, their sector and their district, and if we have to move, and this year, what we've also done is, we've mapped everything out, we have maps for each of the 46 routes, the neighborhood routes. And it's, it's really the supervisor that, if we move someone in who has never done this area before, gives them the lowdown on, this is the way to approach this.
Good, yeah, and I.
And a lot of the guys too, excuse me, but a lot of the guys, you know, they, they talk, so, you know, it's like, I was down there, I ran into this situation, well, that's how I handled it the last time, you know, and that kind of a thing, so.
I've seen, I've seen it's a tough, like, just the way that the street is, it's a tough spot, yeah, so, and I have the utmost respect for the work that's been done, they've done a great job. The, the year that we had Armageddon was a really difficult year, but in the whole, the work around town has been, in my opinion, very strong, so I appreciate that. Just one last question is, and I may be wrong on this, and maybe Mr. Montori or you can fill in the blank, but were there some contract changes, collective bargaining changes made around snow plowing that potentially benefit this effort in the agreement?
Yeah, in the past, what we done, not this, not this most recent contract, but the previous contract, we added that anything over 16 hours would be double time for the staff.
Yes.
So that was added, and I think that was really it that, that helped, and that was not just snowstorms, that's just recently, we've had water breaks that kept them for a long day, so.
Yeah.
And that, that, you know, rewards the workers for coming in for these type of operations, but also incentivizes them to come in if they know they're gonna be there.
It's a, it's a huge undertaking, but it's an important function, so.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you and your team, please.
Thank you very much.
Very good. How about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert, it's a pleasure to see you again, and I appreciate, like my colleagues also said, that you're coming to us now, it's really good information, and I'm familiar with the problem that, that you're experiencing, and I see the signs all over the place too, people looking for hiring, so I think you did a good job by advertising it, and I appreciate your methods. The insurance certainly is the, is a real driver of the challenge for, for folks coming in. I had a couple of questions for you. What is the best way for a resident to report when their street isn't plowed and maybe enough time has passed that it kind of odd, like maybe they were missed, or it's a new person, a new contractor of their neighborhood? What's the best way for somebody to report that?
The best way is, is to call during hours.
Call.
Yeah, during the DPW, during our regular hours. We do have a work order system that we check daily. There's comments on the town website, there's comments to the town, and that's a good way, but right under that's the work order system, that's even better.
Okay.
Because it comes directly to us, it goes to the highway supervisor, and we can track it, where we can't really track the comments section.
Sure, sure.
So the best way would be the work order system, right on the front page of the town's website, left-hand sidebar, down the bottom, it says DPW work order, and you can fill that out.
Perfect.
But if you want, and you need, you know, quick response, then it would be to call.
Okay. And if it's late at night or something like that, and somebody needs to, you know, go to work, like a nurse or somebody, is somebody managing the dispatch in the DPW like that night?
Well, we have an on-call system, so if it's an emergency, after-hours, they call the, well, it's the dispatch center, police dispatch, and, and they would then call out a.
Like the non-emergency line or something like that?
Yeah, so that's in an emergency. For non-emergency, it's what we pick up in the morning.
Okay, all right, great. Who plows the housing authority properties, elder housing, our fragile populations, who takes care of that?
I believe they do the housing authority. We sand and salt, I should say we salt, we don't sand anymore really.
Okay.
But we sand the lots, and I believe they.
They have their own.
They have their own plows, yeah. I believe it's actually the Parks Department who does the sanding. If for some reason, they either don't respond, or their trucks are broken down, or whatever, we assist in that, that capacity.
Okay, thank you. Do we hire seasonal workers for this kind of work?
No. And that's something that we talked about earlier this year. I think putting somebody in a vehicle who isn't a town employee, invested in the town, who's jumping in the truck and going off and plowing, to me, isn't the, the best approach to work, you know, it's either gonna damage the truck or damage private property. We do have one retired individual who came back and said, if you need help this year, you know, give me a call. So we have to get him set up as a special employee, but, and we'll be doing that. But no, not, not on that kind of part-time basis.
Okay, I appreciate the answer to the question, because I get these questions.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So that's part of why I'm asking them, and I appreciate your candor. So I just wanted, for the, for the public to understand, you mentioned that you have 24 staff members who come, who are on, on staff, and we hope all show for, you know, snow and ice operations, but they, they work through the storm until it's done. There isn't a second shift that comes in, it's the same group of people, and they work the whole duration of the storm, beforehand, afterward, for pushing out the edges and snow removal, and then they get to sleep, and then maybe sidewalks happen the next day.
And sidewalks happen, yes, the sidewalks happen, especially this year, you know, if we had the staff to put someone in sidewalk tractor during the plowing operation, we would do that and get, get in front of that, but, and some towns do. But because of staffing, we'll wait until they have some sleep and then come back. But thank you for bringing that up, because that is a challenge. Sometimes the guys are out 30 hours, and, you know, they, they do catch a cat nap here and there, but even at that, driving in a circle for 30 hours is not something you wanna do, so.
It's really hard.
Yeah.
It's really hard work. I've, I've done a ride-along for a few hours, and it's really hard work, and you have to eat right for it, and you have to prepare for it, and it's tiresome, and it's, it can be dangerous, and that's why we, don't crowd the plow, don't get too close, they can't always see the edges in driving snow, so it's just, it's really important, and the work that they do is important to the safety of our residents. So I hope that you will take your presentation, your words, and post them on the web, the homepage of the website along with your new maps.
I can do, yeah.
Because it's a good explanation that you provided, and it'll give the residents an opportunity to look at their map and see where it is and make an adjustment, because everybody gets a little anxious sometimes, and when, I don't, because I live on Shawshin Street, so I have, it's always clear on Shawshin Street.
Yeah, no.
So it's plowed all night long, but I really do appreciate the work that you and your staff and our contractors do, and it's yeoman's work, and very important.
Thank you.
Very good. I had 11 questions, and 11 questions have been addressed, so I mean, I really don't have anything, just maybe directed to Mr. Montori. You know, we're trying to get in front of it, you mentioned about calling the dispatch center, because a lot of times, we'll get calls, and usually I typically try to tell folks, some storms can be really, really, really long, so sometimes you gotta hang in it and get plowed out, because, you know, they plow, and then the storm goes on and on and on, and then we plow again, so just to be patient, but hey, sometimes we do miss the mark. You know, we miss a road or a street, or it's not plowed properly, and we're gonna get those calls, and it's how we address those in a timely manner that makes all the difference, so. So thanks to the team. And I would only ask Mr. Montori, God forbid, if we have to use a silver bullet, because whatever reason, we're just not getting it done, I know we talked about it, you know, if we ever kind of have to come back and make an emergency meeting, or do something with funding, or get really creative, let's keep on thinking about that, and that will be like our final ace of spades or silver bullet, because hopefully this all works, but, you know, it's just another, it's Plan B, God forbid, that's all.
And, no, just to follow up on that, it's important to note that, especially during the major storms in the past or in the future, we never, ever say, you know, we need to keep the cost down, we wanna get the job done, we wanna get the residents taken care of, you know, we do what we need to do, so it's, we're not out there trying to, we don't stop doing things to save money on these storms, we, it's about public safety, it's about the safety of the residents and, and the safety of the employees doing the work, so we'll do whatever we need to do. It's one of the. It's one of those accounts that you can run a deficit, and we have run deficits in previous years, and some years we have surpluses, it depends on the season, but for the major events, we, we do everything we can to make sure we do it right.
Thank you very much.
For a minute, Mr. Chairman, I thought you were gonna say we can all come in and, and help plow.
Well, you're welcome, if you wanna do a ride-along.
You scared me for a minute.
I think Jay would be able to do that. Jay might be able.
I would help out.
I thought that's where you were heading. We'll just call a meeting, that's a good idea.
Ms. Stronach?
Yeah, I, I do have one more question. Can you just remind the residents about the parking ban? I did notice it's on the calming, but while we're talking about all the things that are proactively in place, I think that's a good one to remind people about.
Yes, we have a parking ban in place from November through March, and you can't park on the street during, when it's snowing. You can't park on the street during the winter, I believe it's the hours of eleven to seven or something like that. But it's on the website. You can go to the snow and ice under the DPW, that link, and it does have snow operations, which has to be updated, but it has the outline of what we do, and it does have things such as the basketball hoops need to be pulled back from the street, they can't be on the street. Parking, the parking ban, and then pushing snow into the street, there's a ban on that. So, yes, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
All right, very good. If there's nothing else, thank you very much, Mr. Gilbert. Thank you very much for being proactive. Awesome.
Have a Merry Christmas.
You too. Thanks to the team as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All righty, moving right along. Your next order of business is residents. Do we have any residents? Seeing none, we're gonna move right along to new business. All right, team, it's that time of year where we do some renewals for all the different licensing. And we have the liquor license, common victoria license, amusement license, entertainment license, pool, table licenses, class license approval, usually deal with auto, so we have a series of these. So typically what we do is we make a bulk, bulk approval, but prior to that, we usually ask Mr. Montori, who's delinquent? We don't like delinquent folks that may be delinquent for their licenses, fees, or taxes, or otherwise. So Mr. Montori will ask the question, do we have any of this long list that fall in that, any of those buckets?
No, it looks like everyone's paid up.
Awesome, I mean.
Everyone, it's, it's
I think that's a first for me.
Yeah, it's a first.
Wow, so. So with that being said, without wasting any time, again, all the paperwork is in line, so we make the motion for that bulk approval, and then we have a lot of signing to do, and then all of these businesses are locked and loaded for two thousand twenty-two for their particular application slash permit, so.
Mr. Chairman, just, just to keep this moving, to your point, what I'd like to do is offer a motion relative to all of the different license approvals that we're about to act upon, that the minutes reflect that the approval is subject to all taxes and utility fees that are required be paid. And up to date, I know the town manager's telling us that's the case, but just to be double certain and have that disclaimer, I would offer that as a motion, and, and my intention is so that we don't have to repeat it on each one. I would ask that the minutes reflect it's applicable to all the licenses that we're about to approve.
Very good, very reasonable. So I have a motion, a second, all's in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. That was, that could be the quickest in history, that was great. Okay, the next one we have is the Conservation Commission appointment, and what we're gonna do there, team, we have three solid candidates. What we're gonna do there is we'll have a meeting the first of January, because there is a gap, and we need to get a member appointed, so what we'll do is we'll have a, maybe a WebEx or a Zoom there, and we'll do the, you know, very typical, we'll, we'll interview all three candidates, you know, and then we make a decision, a collective decision, so who we're appointing. So that's, again, I wanted to put it on the agenda and let the residents know our process. That's it, short, sweet. Any questions?
Christmas Eve, you gonna do that?
Yeah, well, I'm gonna play the Grinch, and we're gonna schedule a Christmas Eve, we might have a follow-up meeting for the first, you never know.
Very good.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to table that, or you just go with?
To be official, sure, yeah. I mean, it was more of awareness, I probably should have, it was more of awareness, Mr. Montori, I don't think we need a
No, I don't think you do.
Okay.
Checking.
All right, very good. It brings us to Mr. Montori's favorite night of the year, it's the annual Town Manager's Annual Performance Appraisal, and again, just for the residents, it's part of our roles and responsibilities as a select board to do this yearly yearly for Mr. Montori via the contract, so this is the time where we kind of give Mr. Montori feedback, pros, cons. We do have a template just for the residents, we don't need to follow the template per se, and that template consists of, like, for instance, manager skills, budget preparation, direction, supervision of departments, organizational readiness, community relationships, and personal qualities. But again, if, if, the only, kind of what the, the, the plan typically what we follow is, if you do update this via writing, that we'll pass it in for the record, however, whatever we say obviously is gonna get captured, and will be on the record via meeting notes, so there's really no special formula, you know, for this, it kind of, this one kind of stinks to go first and last, because sometimes there's some repeats, so however, we have to do it. And I was gonna add one other item, too. Just, but it's not coming to mind. Does that sound, does that sound fair and reasonable, or any questions? Did I leave anything out? All right, with that being said, why don't we jump into, oh, I was gonna add. So after the review, what we'll do in the next meeting, which is January fourth, is typically we'll have an executive session. We'll talk about Mr. Montori's compensation contact based on this meeting, and, and we'll discuss that in the executive session and come back to an open meeting, and that's very typical of what we do, so. Stay tuned for that. So with no further ado, how about Mr. Mack? You wanna take the, be the first, take the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Being the new guy and not having done one of these in this format, bear with me. So some of the high points I've identified are organizational planning and developing alternative options and course of action. I wanna start by saying, I went a little off-script with this format that we have here, based on most of it being positive, and it appeared that there was gonna be a lot of repetition in my comments, so I distilled it down a bit. Over the past nine months since I joined the board, Mr. Montori and I have spent a significant amount of time together, and I wanna applaud him for answering all of my questions intelligently, providing all information in a timely fashion, and at some cases, I wouldn't say too much information, but providing everything, including the kitchen sink, which was good for me, being able to go back, dive a little bit deeper, and, and really get into the weeds. Some of the, the key programs that we've kind of worked on since my time here is the website, and I know there's been lots of challenges there. Managing that relationship with the vendor and managing the IT director on that entire process, in my eyes, has gone well. The standing up and helping to define the cyber program, resourcing for it, and again, managing all of the various parties that are gonna be part of that, I consider a win. And the DPW building, which I know is a, a topic of discussion, I know we've had a number of meetings, you've brought in staff, we've met with the architects, and this is where that kind of alternate courses of action is really big in my mind. Willing to explore, willing to work, willing to push the engineers and architects to help find more cost-effective solutions, in my mind, that has been a big win. Going over to preparation and dissemination of information, I've never had to wait on any request I've, I've made of you, they've all been very timely. Additionally, the weekly reports, those weekly rollups, I think I can speak for everyone here that those are exceedingly helpful, and that is something that I would recommend continuing. I don't, I can't imagine why we'd stop it, but definitely something to sustain. Community relations. It's been a interesting year, as we thought we were coming out of COVID, and now we're going back into other possible various forms. So managing the public outreach and public questions, comments, concerns on COVID, as well as a few other high-topic items, such as the zoning bylaw, and aims on. I know there's been lots of communication, setting up of the email, monitoring of that, et cetera. Now, there have been a number of meetings with residents, and I believe that has all gone very well. Directing and supervising departments, I've seen nothing to the contrary of this going very well. I do have one improvement for next year, and I know we've talked about this, is I was a bit shocked when I found out that you are the only person who is rated. So none of the department heads, no one else is rated, which I know that as, as a leader in my own organization, and previously in the military, understanding your second and third lines is, is very important for managerial purposes. So I, I believe that that would be a boon to you for, for improving down the road. And finally, personal qualities. Again, communication, responsiveness, preparation, and professionalism, I think, just sum it up. It's been a pleasure over the past nine months. I'm looking forward to the remaining two years, and I, I think we're, we're on the right track. Thank you, thank you very much.
Very good. How about Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna try to keep my comments brief, but I had an opportunity to step off this board for a short time and, and then rejoin the board. And after having a, a long stretch working closely with Mr. Montori, I tried to bring a fresh set of eyes to the picture that I saw, and unfortunately, despite my many efforts to trip him up and find some reasons to see things differently, I can say in the last nine months that nothing has changed, and your work product, in my opinion, and your approach to it is exceptional. So I'll just tick through some bullet points. There will be no surprises here. Quite frankly, at a very high level, I think that this town is super blessed to have you at the helm. This is not an easy business anymore, and many communities are struggling to find talent. And I, in my opinion, you're one of the best town administrators, town managers, certainly in the region, if not in the Commonwealth, and we're very fortunate to have you. From a managerial perspective, I'm gonna say that I have always found you to be responsive to issues and concerns. I think you're very proactive, you're a strong communicator, and most importantly, I think you're a strong decision-maker. I don't always agree with all the decisions we, we talk them through, but what I do respect is that you make the decision, and we move forward, and that's the most important thing, in my opinion. From a budgetary perspective, I think that you are exceptional at financial planning. It's probably your biggest strength that you've brought to Tewksbury. And I can say, and I know Ms. Stronach can attest to this as well, because we were here when times were not so bright. We are so far ahead of where we were fiscally as compared to when you started, and that's a credit to your hard work and your, your leadership, your vision. And we have evolved into moving away from many of the bad habits that we had utilized, the tricks, one-time tricks, if you will, to get by. We now have a, a vision that we can execute on that is reliable and a disciplined approach, and that's to your credit. And Mr. Mack, you made a comment about the DPW and the alternatives to that project. From a fiscal perspective, I think it's just enormously impressive that we've gone from a, a bad place financially ten or twelve, fifteen years ago, to now we have the potential opportunity to address that facility from a capital improvement point of view, without having to ask the town residents to do a debt exemption vote. When I first got on this board, that was the furthest thing from reality. And whether that comes to be or not is a different question, but even being able to entertain that possibility is a testament to a lot of good work over a long time, so I appreciate that. With respect to supervision of your departments, and there are many, I'll just simply say that I think you've assembled an outstanding team of leaders and managers, but more importantly, you're fully engaged in what goes on. I don't think there's anything that happens under your watch that you are not aware of, and that's a collaboration, not an inspection with your managers, and that's because you foster a good team approach to things, and I think that speaks well. More, you also, I believe, hold each and every one of your managers accountable in an equal way, and they know what is expected. And I think that they have an enormous amount of respect and appreciation for you, but I also know from talking to you that you likewise have a, a lot of respect for what they each do every day for the community. With respect to, oops, excuse me, organizational relations, I will say and, and suggest that you're always accessible. You have consistent communication, you give a lot of detail, as Mr. Mack you mentioned. Unlike past experience, there are no favorites here, everybody gets the same information and has access to it. I think your town meeting preparation is outstanding. An example of that is the handout that you developed over time. Every single town meeting, I see you make slight improvements to it that benefits town meeting attendees and our community as a whole. And it's consistently, I think, led to the good town meeting outcomes that we've had, in part. So good, good, strong work there. With respect to community relations, I believe you're always accessible to residents. I know firsthand that people have a free line to come in and see you, or call you, email you. You try hard to accommodate requests and needs, and sometimes, to your credit, you do say no and have to say no. But you do it in a respectful and an appropriate way, and most importantly, as I talked about your decision-making, you, you communicate. Sometimes it may not be what a resident wants to hear, but you communicate, and it's not left or ignored so that they go away frustrated. I believe you represent our town very well. And with respect to personal qualities, I've said this time and again in the years that I've sat at this table, but I think your ethics and standards and your accountability, both self-accountability and accountability for your entire team is as high as it possibly can be. You lead by example, and as I said at the beginning of my comments, and I'll end with this, I believe that you are one of the best town managers, certainly in the region, if not in the Commonwealth, and we are very, very fortunate to have you as a, a partner in our effort to manage the town's affairs. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, back to you.
Good stuff, Mr. Johnson, as usual. How about Ms. Stronach?
Okay, I'm just gonna say whatever he said, and then turn it back to you. You're always a tough act to follow when you come to it, and you both have described very similar experiences that I have. When I approach this evaluation, I, and I like to look at the evidence, and I have spoken about that every time I've talked about this, and I go back to our goals and objectives that was brought forward to us in November. And what I have really appreciated about this document is that this has not only become a document of your work, but a collective body of your managers, and it is in a concise way, which is the way that you communicate to us. Very concise, I admire that, I wish I could emulate that sometimes myself, and so what you're showing us is where you, where we were and where we're going, and I think that is extremely impressive, in a way that is in a snapshot that everybody can see and look at without getting and look at without getting bored before they finish the end of the story. Because it's that concise and specific. And to that, I looked at your goals. And um, what I also appreciate is that you don't bite off more you can, than you can chew. And you have taught that to your department heads, because that was not always the case as I sat here. And we get into trouble when we um set the expectations so high and set ourselves up for failure. And I really appreciate that as a town, we take a measured approach. And that way there, we're getting to the finish line. It may not always look glitzy, but we're able to get where we need to go, and I really appreciate that. So in terms of your goals, I look at the management skills and your goals of the policy work that you have done since I have been on this board is uh, you know, just incredible. I think about the um, again, not a fancy document, but you put together a procedure document. And that took six years to get to the end of that. And but to have that for your employees and kind of that roadmap for them is unbelievable. But what's more unbelievable is it's a living document that you actually update. I don't know if everybody else reads it, but I find those things like, you know, you do the zoning thing. I find this stuff really fascinating. And um, having those set work, um, just guidelines and um godrails so that people can stay in their lane is really important, and I appreciate that. When I look at the budget presentation, goal number three, again, evidence. I'm not going to talk about the town meeting and the budget work that goes into that May town meeting, but you make it look effortless along with your staff. Same thing with the taxation, I mean, it, the, it makes it look like a 15-minute presentation was easy. That's not easy, that's really challenging work. And to be able to translate that in a way that residents can understand that is just pretty unbelievable. And I appreciate that, and I know our residents appreciate that. Todd did say that that is probably your strongest suit, I would agree with that as well. Where you have taken us financially is incredible. And again, similar to what we talked about with those policies and procedures, you're continually looking at that to see how we can re-mortgage. I use that word not, I know that's not uh, but we look at those things to see where else we can save a buck. And, you know, looking at the water rates and, yeah, we, oh, they only save $50. $50 per, you know, resident is a big deal. Not being able to raise those rates and constantly looking at how we can save money on Sutton Brook Farms and those types of things and, you know, oh, I did that once, wait, can we do that again? I think that's really important. When I look at operational relationships, I think of goal number one in the capital improvement projects that go across every sector of this town, from the school department in our, in our facilities to um, you know, what's happening down in Livingston. And um, being, using money in a way that one-time money is being spent that we can look at in a long range rather than a quick hit that is a flash in the pan. And that document, again, these documents are living. In a lot of communities, these documents are put up, they're put on a shelf and, oh, I checked that box. That's not what these documents are here. And because you have these goals and objectives and hold them accountable, your staff no longer just, you know, um, have them sitting in the cellophane, so to speak. When I think about community relationships, I think about goal number three. And I think about the transfers of land to the Commonwealth. I think about the work that you did on the, with the town clerk in pushing back at our um legislative uh under a very short timeline. And it's not the outcome that we wanted, but they heard that it was not what we expected from them. And I think that that is also a hard thing to do sometimes, to tell our legislative leaders, you're not doing what we need to do as a town, and we're gonna hold you accountable as well, just like you're, we're holding ourselves accountable. And I think that's really important, and it's not always a very popular thing to do. And people worry about doing that. And I appreciate the fact that you're not afraid to step up and be heard for um us as a town. And um, then I think about your personal qualities. And while that is never put in your goals, I think that that is at the forefront of almost everything that you do. And I think that for me, I think it's a driving force in um your work. And what I mean by that is I am talking about the empowerment of your staff, the trust that you have developed with your leaders, both your new leaders. I see that trust being developed with your um new police chief, with your new fire chief, as well as the trust that you've put in your um, your current staff. And that, to me, out of any relationship and collaboration, if you aren't able to put that faith in those people, everything becomes disingenuous. And you can have all the collaboration, but at the end of the day, it doesn't work. And I think that that is transferred down to the town staff, because I think that they, you lead by example, and I think that they pick up on that. And um, I've seen um the sense of urgency that you bring to the work. And um, you know, people here have already spoken about um giving the answers that aren't popular sometimes and telling people no. I've been on the receiving end of that. Um, and I, I respect the way that those are done. I also respect the way that sometimes you find a way to the middle ground, if there's a way to be had. And um, so I appreciate that. In closing, um, when I think about where you can improve, and I do think that you're accessible to um our community. And I say this every year, and I'm gonna say it again, and I know it's not what your focus is, but I would like to see you at community events. And we have a lot of great community events. And I'm not saying that you have to go to every one, but I think that um, I would like to see that increased, so. And I know that you work on that, and I know that what, that um, that um, the real work is done behind the scenes, and I get that. And I also know that you do that because you don't want to take away from the work that volunteers and everybody else is doing. But um, I think people would love to see you um at our events. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
But I just, I, I have to tell you um, one last thing. While uh, Mr. Johnson said that um, he thinks that you might be one of the best town managers in the, in the state, I'm gonna say, I, in my humble opinion, you are the best town manager in the state.
Thank you.
And I am so proud when I tell people that I am from Tewksbury and I don't often, outside of this, tell people what I, that I sit here on this board. But when people find that out, they're like, oh my God, you have Richard Montori, you guys are so lucky. And I hear that repeatedly, and I'm no, I'm not alone in that. So I, I just want people to know, while sometimes when they hear this, they're like, oh, it's a love fest. The work that goes on behind the scenes is, is real, and it's not easy work. And you make it look easy, which sometimes distracts from the work, so.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Ms. Swobin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate my colleagues' comments, I generally concur. And um, I am not as good off the cuff as I would suggest that you are, so I have prepared some comments which I will just read into the record. Managing a municipality during a worldwide pandemic is no easy task. I commend Mr. Montori and his entire leadership team and all staff for their dedication, resilience and professionalism. His proactive responsiveness has always been mindful of putting residents and employees' health and well-being first and foremost, while being a responsible steward of our human and financial resources. As we received federal funding, he worked with the select board and staff to find appropriate avenues for expenditures, including setting aside ARPA funds for our water infrastructure. I enjoyed working with him and staff on creating a rental and mortgage assistance program in partnership with a Lowell Five Bank. I think it's important to add that Mr. Montori is circumspect in his work. He listens and evaluates ideas and navigates a road that aims to address the problems we see, helps our residents and businesses as we can, and doesn't create undue pressure on an already very busy staff. And they are busy. The budget was completed on time, town meetings happened in person and safely. The work of the town continued almost without a hitch. He has hired a new police chief and fire chief, advocated for increased state funding at all levels, and ably supports his staff across all domains, including a very challenging redistricting process previously mentioned. His financial leadership has also been steady through this process, through the construction of a new elementary school, a new fire station, a new regional dispatch center, and the planning for a new combined DPW school facilities building, funding it within the levy limit and continuing to refine that plan to provide the most cost-effective option to bring forward. These are the works Town Meeting has charged us with, and his steadfast work has kept our bond rating excellent and greatly reduced the interest rates we're paying. Resident engagement has been a big part of our capital plan and other works that we do, and has been incorporated into our sidewalk construction, roadway paving, other infrastructure improvements as well, including our water main replacements. These are but a few examples of the caliber of his work. Communication to the board and out to, through the public has improved each year. With greater utilization this year of social media, the recent hiring of Gilfoyle and Associates for the Police Department, and the good work he has undertaken with Mr. Mackey and the website redesign. He continues to meet privately with neighborhood groups affected by large projects under construction or even on the horizon. My only request would be to adopt a policy of trying to communicate with all the people that you can in all the ways that you can, any time that you can, and working to coordinate campaigns across various channels and throughout community groups. His staff are enthusiastic to do the work of government, even volunteer government, even at night, long after their workday has ended. I've seen it working on the DEI Advisory Committee, the General Bylaw Committee, the Zoning Bylaw Committee, and myriad other groups. In part, that comes from excellent hiring, but it also comes from consistent leadership and example. I maintain that Tewksbury residents, businesses and guests continue to benefit from your leadership, Mr. Montori. And I thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Very good, well said. Very good. All right, I'll try to be brief here, going last. Go is tough, it's a tough position here, but that's okay, that's all, it's, it's part of the job, right? And did I mention this is Mr. Montori's favorite night of the year?
Favorite.
Yeah, no, we'll try to make him turn red right now, so uh, this is gonna be tough, but I'll just gonna fly by this, so um. So a few points, Mr. Montori is organized like no other. Um, I do believe you're demanding but fair, humble but confident. I like to say there's thinkers, talkers and doers, you're all three, but mainly a doer, and that's um, that's a very good thing. I always tell folks that, Richard Montori, uh, you run the bank, that's my, I love analogies, you run the bank. And I think my, my role's responsibilities is, is make sure you're, we're protect, you're protecting the assets. And um, I just feel like as, even being on this board, like I tell sometimes policemen, firemen or folks that work here, I'm not their boss, you're their boss, and we are boss. But I use that term very lightly because you, you don't act like that, you're leaders, that's what leaders do. You know, I don't like that term boss or a manager, per se, but um, I think that's a good thing that we um, I know we're not supposed to say, we talk about Tewksbury and other, other towns, but when you see all the nonsense with different boards interacting with the town managers and departments, it gets confusing quick. And um, you know, I know I don't do that, we don't do this as a board, and we trust in you, and that's, um, that's what we're supposed to do. And um, you do a very good job at that. I'll never stop challenging you on the budget, water, sewer fees, tax shifts, capital improvements, including the DPW stuff, but that's all good.
Yeah.
You know, folks, we're not supposed to get along, that's, that's my job. And again, I'm only one, one person on this board is to challenge you. Um, until taxes are zero or they go down, we're gonna keep on putting you to the test. Because I always say Tewksbury is not affluent, um, as I like to say. Then last but not least, I do believe you protect your staff. I'm, I'm gonna use the one, I got Bill Belichick in there, see, I always call him Bill Belichick. Uh, I do believe you protect your staff, and you know something, that's not a bad thing. You know, folks can, on the outside can say you might protect he or she, but you take everything in-house, behind closed doors, our phone rings a lot. And being the chair, I'm privy to these calls and these matters. And if I was in your shoes, and sometimes I am in my other world, I would handle it the same way. So I know sometimes residents don't see that, but um, I think that leadership style is commendable, the way you handle it. And um, Ms. Stronach talked about public relations, I'm a little bit opposite. I believe we're the ones that'll be shaking hands and kissing babies in public, not necessarily yourself, but that's okay, it's just a matter of difference. So I like the role that you play, and I always think it's us to be out there in the community and taking that back to you, so I don't have any, any, any issues there. And I guess last but not least, um, is around, I think I've been doing this now for five years, give or take, I forget, you blink. But I think handling the negativity, just like in football, typically when a football team loses, either the coach gets blamed or the quarterback, either or. And, and this gig, either you get blamed or we get blamed, and that's okay, that's our job, you know, we're battle-tested.
Sometimes we all get blamed.
Yeah, we all get blamed. And social media nowadays, my goodness, um, thank God I'm not on social media because of my job. But let's just be honest, I think in today's day and age, social media is a very, it's a tough thing to deal with. You know, we might get a text or a ping, hey, have you seen this, no matter what the topic is. And sometimes folks get half the story, or sometimes the facts are just way out there. But I know sometimes it can ride you and staff, you know, it's not easy. A lot of folks are on Facebook and see social media. And I think the way that you handle that day in, day out, it's real pressure in your job, in your gig, it's not easy. And I think the way you handle that, uh, and just say on to the next, you're battle-tested, and that's why, so we had so many superlatives, because you can absorb the blows. But I know sometimes, you know, we think about that type of stuff. And, and for me, I think I've seen you evolve um like no other in that area, so that's very commendable. I think last but not least, yep, that's pretty much all I had. Again, a lot of stuff was, was um very, I don't wanna be repetitive. So I'm gonna pause, and what I like to do is usually open it back up to the board for any last-second comments, thoughts. We're good?
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, Mrs. Stronach made a comment, and um, I actually think it's really important. We've done this many times, some of us have done this more than others. But all of us, the five people at this table tonight, um, have, um, you know, come at this position, being a member of this board, from very different vantage points, different experience. We live in different parts of town, we have different social circles, um, we have different backgrounds. And there have been predecessor members of this board who fall in that same category. And I think, you know, rather than um, look at this and say, we're all um, kind of being super positive, I think what should be taken away is that each of us brought an experience that's um, a product of interaction and observation with one individual and by extension, his team. But we all came to similar conclusions. And that's not an accident, that's because all of us, I think, are trusted by the people who supported us to put us here. And um, we are applying skills of judgment and um, observation to come to a conclusion. And if you listen to the five um summaries, there are consistencies across the board. That's not by accident, that's because Mr. Montori delivers that. And I don't think anyone here is um, coming at it from the standpoint of um, just trying to get along. Everybody's bringing their objective analysis to the table. And I, I think that's important for the public to hear. None of us have discussed this until this very minute. But we all independently came to similar conclusions. And it's easy to kind of look at it and say, ah, to use your term, a love fest. But um, I think if we had someone here who was doing a, a poor job, we would all say what we saw. And we would speak to that as well, so. Yeah, so, good point. So I just, I, I don't want that to get lost.
Great call out, Mr. Johnson. All right, anything else from the board? Mr. Montori, anything on your side?
If I could just thank, first of all, thank you to the entire board, I appreciate um, your comments tonight and your kind words. I appreciate your comments tonight and your kind words. But, you know, as I've said in my past reviews, and I've said it at other times, and I'm going to say it again tonight, I am blessed to have an outstanding group of people to work with, and that starts with this board. I see what my colleagues in other communities are going through, have gone through, the challenges that they face with their elected officials, and to use some of the terms of, some of the terms tonight, I am truly blessed to have such a good Board of Selectmen. As Mr. Johnson said, you all come from very diverse backgrounds, social circles, et cetera, and that's a good thing for me, because I have learned from each of you. As the chairman mentioned about challenging me on various issues and areas, I like that. Over the last nine months with James, I have learned a lot from him, and I look forward to the next two years and hopefully longer. But those are the things I like. I like learning from each of you. I like when you send me something to, to review that other communities are doing, or things you're thinking of, no matter how off the wall they could be, as I look at Mrs. Wellman, Ms. Wellman. But, you know, it's, those are good things, because you don't want to get stale on your job. You want to continue to grow, and you want to make this community the best community it can possibly be, and I think it's a great community as it is. But I remember where we were, you know, 11 years ago. I remember the type of room we sat in 11 years ago. And where we are today, we make great strides, and that's because we have good people in this community, and we have great department heads. I couldn't do any of this without the department heads I have. Many of the faces have changed, but they're all still outstanding at what they do. And I'm just lucky to be able to guide the ship, because what they do on a daily basis, I don't think they get enough credit for. I don't think people understand how hard they work, how dedicated they are. Just in the past two years with this pandemic, what they did to make sure services were maintained for people, I will never forget, and I will constantly give them accolades for, for what they did. But all of that, everything we do here is because we have good people in the, in elected boards, appointed boards. We have an outstanding finance committee. We have great volunteers. I've been fortunate in the last 10 years to have people help guide me. I, you know, Charles Arullos, having him, you know, when I started here, was, was a blessing for me, because he helped me. So, so with that, I'll say thank you, and we have a lot more to do.
Okay. Very good. That brings us to Mr. Montori. You still have a floor, Town Manager section. What do you got?
I only have a couple of things. Town Council invoice for Phalien Brown for November 15th, and the amounts are $4,505. I'd recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And for November 30th, $2,847.50, I'd recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. And that's it.
That's it, short and sweet. All right, very good. I think we have some minutes. Do we have some minutes to approve?
We do, Mr. Chairman. We have two sets of minutes. They went out in the packet. Hope everyone has had a chance to review. We have minutes from June 1st and June 15th, and I would put those forward for approval.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we're talking June 1st, okay, and June 15th, so we're going to put those together. Should I have a motion? Do I have a second? Oh, I'm sorry, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
They passed unanimously. Brings us the board member reports. How about Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recently had a very productive set of meetings with Mr. Montori and staff, as I had touched on in the review. We're, we're digging deep. We're, we're really getting into the DPW building and exploring other options. I know that, that's, this item has come in front of the board multiple times, and there are, we're trying to explore those options to get that cost down. Additionally, does not look like we're going to have the website done for the end of the year. We're hoping early January, but it's, we're in the finishing touches. We're, we're transferring Gator over and getting that to go, get ready to live, go live. That is all I have.
How about Mr. Johnson?
Sure, just two items. We had another zoning bylaw committee meeting last evening. And as we turn the calendar to 2022, we will be in the home stretch for that effort. We have a meeting on January 5, and then we have a public input session, the, the last opportunity for public input in a, in in-person capacity on January 18. That was previously posted as January 19, so I want to make it clear, we've changed the date to Tuesday, January 18. And then we have our last meeting as a committee, as things currently stand, and we'll try to wrap up our recommendations in anticipation of the warrant deadline on February 2nd. So, we have three meetings on the calendar, and I think the process is unfolding well. We've had a number of interested parties bring us items to consider, some of them we've adopted, some of them have helped us maybe improve upon what's in the bylaw, while not 100% adoption of what was asked for or recommended. But there's been ample dialogue, and that's been done in both written form through email communication, as well as in person. So, I feel like we're closing in on the home stretch, and we have a product that we can present to Town Meeting on the near horizon, and hopefully the town will be supportive of that at Town Meeting. And my second item is I just want to wish everyone a safe and healthy holiday stretch. Merry Christmas, and stay safe. The pandemic is not subsiding, as we all know, and I'm sure each of us can think about someone that we know personally who's been impacted by it. So, be vigilant and be safe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. How about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick things. The LRTA met recently. Their meetings are virtual on Thursday afternoons, and so that's pretty convenient, actually. And so we had a nice meeting there, and they were talking about initiatives to turn buses, to have more EV buses, actually have EV buses in our region, and where they would put charging stations and so forth. So, there was a general conversation around that kind of work, which is interesting. The DEI Committee is working on a community-wide survey. Mr. Montori is putting together a Survey Monkey account, or Momentive, I think the company changed its name. So, we'll be bringing that forward. Before the survey is launched, we will share it with town departments and with this board. And so we look for that in January. It's a, it's a good survey so, so far. So, we haven't finalized that yet. We'll be bringing that forward. I want to thank all of the members of this board for their support over the last six months. With my mother being ill, she is going home next week, so it's, it's a very exciting time in our household, and I appreciate your, your kind thoughts that you've all shared with me over this period. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and as Mr. Johnson said, stay safe. Thank you very much.
Very good. And I, I was able to make the reuse committee, so I'll have an update, I'll have an update during our next meeting. So, again, in closing, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to the residents and to the board.
I forgot Ann Marie.
Oh, Ms. Stronach, see that? Ms. Stronach, I might apologize. I want to, I was trying to get out of here.
Yeah, I know. I know, you're worried about the one more thing.
Sorry.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No sweat.
So, the Elementary Building Committee met on December 9th. That project is plowing. It's really exciting to see it. We are starting to work with the educators to bring them into the building, so that they can get a sense of what those classrooms are looking like. And yes, it is true, we are not going to allow the educators to bring everything from the old school to the new school. So, I am hearing rumblings that people are concerned about that, but I can tell you that the school will be well-supplied with the things that they need. So, I want to mention that. The, I, I have to give a gigantic shout out to the Events Committee. For those of you who were able to attend the tree lighting ceremony, I wasn't able to participate myself, but they did an amazing job, and they transformed this room into a Santa's workshop, and we were able to have Santa here, because the Pi Social changed it up a little this year. And it was just a tremendous event, and they just do great work, and I really appreciate that committee and their dedication, and encourage Mr. Montori to come to our events. Sorry, couldn't help myself. Anyway, and lastly, well, not lastly, because I'm going to, but what I really wanted to talk about tonight is that January 3rd nomination papers are going to be due, and we have a lot of open, potential open positions that are going to be coming on this circuit. And I wanted to let the residents know that I, after a long soul-searching and family discussion, that I will not be seeking nomination for the Board of Selectmen for the next term. And I wanted to share that with you all tonight, as well as the residents, because my hope is that by announcing this early, we will have some people interested in serving on this board. They will be working with a tremendous town manager that we have here, and a remarkable group of people that have really been quite near and dear to my heart. This work has been incredibly rewarding to me, but similar to the last time when I stepped off this board, my life has been pretty full, and I am not going to be able to dedicate the amount of time that this board deserves to be given. And I don't want to shortchange our residents, and I appreciate the time and the trust that they have put in me to serve here. So, that's what I would like to make you all aware of. And then with that said, I too want to wish everybody a happy holiday. I appreciate that everybody needs to say safe coming up, and more importantly, you know, when we say safe, we think about the pandemic right now, but, you know, there, there's a lot of distractions out there on the roads, too. And I, I just always like to take this time of the year, as I do at the beginning of school, to just remind people that we got plenty of time to get where we're, we're going. And I know, as you know, time is not my strength, and, but take the time you need, because it's important, and don't forget that. So, with that said, I wish everybody a Happy New Year, and that's all I have.
We still have three more months of you. I mean that in a very good way. So, I'm going to say my goodbyes, just like, no, but you have been an extreme mentor, just like Mr. Johnson has been a mentor to me, so we'll save the goodbyes. And I already said my piece, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So, second.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Thank you very much.